Go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for Monday, August 15th. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Here.
Mayor Protem Doby? Absent. Councilmember Bates?
Here.
Councilmember Turco?
Here.
Councilmember Nofolda? Absent.
And we will be starting with closed session. City Attorney, if you could read us in a closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss Item 3A as listed on this evening's agenda.
Awesome. Thank you. We will be back.
Thank you.
... ambition or trying to further our own agendas, but that we would be very mindful of the servant aspect of the public job that we do. I thank you for everything that you would accomplish in us, through us, and for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Can you join me down the front? I was just trying to catch you ahead of time.
You gotta be quicker than that.
Just you two?
Come on, all of us. Come on, all of us. Okay, can I have our finance staff come on up? Come on, don't be shy. Come on in, come on in. All right, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, referred to as GFOA, has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Los Alamos for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story. The certificate of achievement is awarded to a government. The award of financial reporting achievement is also presented to the individuals or department designated by the government as primarily responsible for its having earned the certificate. This award is presented to the Los Alamos Finance Department and its personnel. This is a big deal. And Craig, you'd be the head honcho, I'm gonna let you speak.
All right, thank you. All right, the finance team is here tonight, and starting with Brandy Velegas, she joined the city in September of last year, and she serves as the accountant. She came from Private Industries, served in a number of financial positions, and also served with a Orange County School District. Next, I have Maria Benias. She's the Senior Finance Assistant. She joined the department in May of this year, and she served in various finance positions with the City of Norwalk in their accounting division, and also their transit division as well. And lastly, I have John Valderos. He's the Finance Manager. He has over 25 years of professional experience. Twenty-two of those years served with the City of La Habra. He rose progressively through the ranks from accountant to senior accountant to accounting supervisor, and joined the city in May, actually the same day that Maria joined. So, that's the team. Thank you.
Explain kind of the process of what, how cities are awarded this.
Well, they go through the grading criteria, and there's certain criteria that we have to meet, and the auditors help with that as well. And then it's judged by impartial team, which is basically other finance directors look at our financial report, and they have to meet certain criteria. We get a report on things we need to improve each year, and we incorporate those into the next year's award. So it's not a given thing, we have to actually earn it. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll hear from you quickly. Give that to Craig. Okay, up next is Oral Communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. Do I have any comments? Oh, very shy group tonight. Okay, so we'll bring it back to council announcements, and Mark, I'll have you start.
Sure. So I attended three of the four Summer Concert Series events over the last few weeks. There was great attendance. I was part of the team, along with the mayor, that ran the Los Alamos Community Foundation Beer Garden, and we did that to raise funds for the community. Again, it was a lot of fun. We did raise some money. We also got to enjoy the events, and I got so many compliments, not towards me, but towards the city staff for the great work that they did in setting up the events. Particularly, the last one at Orville, it was like packed at the park, and it was just a great community event. It just felt like a fun evening out with the entire community. I attended the National Night Out on August 2nd at Little Cottonwood, which was also really nice to celebrate our law enforcement officers and support them, and it was really nice to have our own National Night Out event in the city, so thank you for that. I attended the Los Al community foundation meeting last Monday. We discussed many things, fundraising included, and a casino night we are scheduling for mid-November. Do you recall the date, Mayor?
No.
It was November 12th, maybe, but we'll double-check that. More details will be released next month in September, so anybody who can make it, please try to attend. You would buy a ticket and attend, and proceeds will go to the community foundation to support the efforts of the foundation, including trying to get our own canine dog here in Los Alamos for our police department as well. Not in city news, but over the weekend, I got to help my parents celebrate their 50th wedding anniversary, so I was really excited about that and proud of them for that, too. And then on another personal note, you know, my firm believes that the city is in a great position right now. Finally, the city is financially stable, we're up to full staffing in our police department. We've got an excellent team of city employees, starting from the city manager to our chief of police, city staff, department leaders as well. City councils worked harmoniously together over the last few years to advance the interests of our residents, so that's one reason, you know, I decided I was not going to run for reelection this year, just because of the great shape that the city is in. That, in a combination with my significant time, work, and family commitments, made me decide that this is probably best for the city and for my family as well. So, I'll talk more about that at the end of my term, but, you know, everyone knows, being on the City Council has been a tremendous honor for me, and truly enjoy working with everyone and look forward to the next few months. And I'll stick around, I'm not moving away or anything like that, but, thank you.
Yeah, we have a couple of commissions, we're gonna put you on.
Okay.
Councilmember Bates?
I'll say involved.
Sure. Mark, thanks, and we'll talk more in December. How's that?
Good.
Okay, thank you. A few things. One, the Orange County Public Library has a new mobile library that's available, and where it's gonna be and how you access it, just go online to ocpl.org, and there's more information and available for working with kids, stuff like that, in the local community. Additionally, if you have any need for research to get help that a library system can help you with, please, again, access the orangecountypubliclibrary.org and go to chat, and they'll have somebody personally available to help you find the information you may need for a particular project you're working on, or a project one of your students, your kids is working on, they can help, too. Now, a couple things that I think are important to put in the back of your mind, these have to do with the Orange County Sanitation District, and there are needed improvements. Just after the beginning of the year, we're gonna have some real challenges, and I hope we'll be able to keep working with the sanitation district. I'll certainly try to do my best, but they're putting in, in addition to the line that's going down Los Alamos Boulevard, they're gonna be looking at approving a line coming in from Cypress that goes from Moody across to Ball, and on Cerritos, Bloomfield, it'll come down Bloomfield, Ball, Bloomfield, and then across Cerritos, and hooks in over right near the flood control channel. So that's gonna cause some major challenges for traffic in that, but that's just to give everybody a heads-up that that's coming. The Orange County Sanitation District approved bargaining, approved final contracts for the bargaining units, that work well, and the headquarters, the new headquarters for the sanitation district is under construction right now. And as I just mentioned, the trunk sewer project that goes down Los Alamos Boulevard, they're doing preliminary work on that, trying to make sure we coordinate that with traffic conditions that are as light as possible when that work is gonna be done. Lastly, coming up, I attended the ribbon cutting for the new therapeutic center over on Cotella Avenue with Mayor Protem, and I just wanna point out that the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee that'll be meeting at the League coming up here in September, they've done some good work. The bottom line, though, is they still don't have anything that does a better job of distributing the sales tax more fairly, so I think that's something we need to keep focusing on that would benefit most of the cities in California instead of those cities with this just-the-big-box distribution centers. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protem Doby?
All right. I was slightly busy. I went to the express urgent care ribbon cutting, and what I wanted to share was, they have a telephone number that you can dial if you are experiencing a mental health emergency, so you don't have to dial 911, you can dial 988 for mental health help specifically. And it's nationwide, it's been live since July 16th, it's for adults and minors, and you get patched to a mental health specialist. And they can also text to chat as well, you know, some of our young people are more comfortable texting, but I thought that that was outstanding, because we often hear about, "Oh, if I'd have just known that so-and-so was having an issue, I would have," but they're getting the resources to catch up with what the need is. So that number was 988, you can text it or call it. And then I was grossly overdressed for the government officials dinner at the Orange County Fair. Did not know, but I looked like a superstar, y'all. I represented Los Al very well, and it was wonderful. It was like officials from all over Orange County, and it wasn't a whole lot of politics, and so that part was nice. And the food was really good, and I got my Krispy Kreme Fried Chicken doughnut, which is
There you go.
Worth the drive. I also did a tour of the Medfly site facility at the Joint Forces Training Base with the Mosquito and Vectors Control District, as they try to explore how to deal with our mosquito infestation, and they're looking to try to handle it the same way that we deal with the Medflies, which is sterilizing the boys, because the boys are not the ones that bite, it's the ladies. And I would like to read a book. There is a book, it's about three minutes, but we'll see how y'all are feeling by the time I get to the end of this, and then I'll decide, 'cause I like to read the room. I went to a grand opening for the premier dance art. It's so beautiful. It's a really nice studio right near Cotella Deli. They've taken up like three or four suites in the upstairs. Lovely couple, they came to our state of the city, or no, Good Morning Los Al. Super sweet, the studio was beautiful, they did a presentation of The Nutcracker in the middle of August, so it was outstanding. Speaking of Cotella Deli, if you have not been inside lately, I highly suggest that you go. They did such a beautiful job in there. It's so nice. I've gone several times, we're not gonna talk about how many, but I've gone. And do you have the slides for that? Now, this book is super cute, because you can share, I was engaged as an adult, my daughter loved it, we went to the Discovery Cube, and it was a mosquito and vector control staff member that wrote the book. They're not really selling it, they're just, you can download it for free, it's a flipbook on Amazon, and it can be shared in a classroom, or it can just be shared with your children, or it can just be, you know, some light nighttime reading, whatever makes you happy, and it's really straight to the point on what to look for and how these little rascals work. So while she pulls up that part, I'm going to pull the book up, and then, Ms. Wendy, can we put the link for the book on our site? Like, can they, is there?
On our site.
Fantastic, you're so awesome. I appreciate your whole life. All righty, so I'm gonna find it, and it's really like three minutes, I'm not exagger- Is that fine, Mayor?
That's fine.
Can I read a book to y'all?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, and I couldn't find my hardback book, so I'm gonna read it from the flipbook, which is how I know that we have a flipbook that we can read through.
That's cool.
All righty, this is Grandmother Mosquito. Grandmother Mosquito was more than just grand. She was called great, great, great by some in the land. So many children, now all adults. They buzzed through the air with disastrous results. It was rumored that Granny Mosquito was old. She had lived to the age of two months, we'd been told. In that long ripe life, she'd seen so many die. Tell us, grandmother, we want to know why. Come closer, my larvae and pupids swim near. This story is gruesome, there's so much to fear. They might be tasty, but humans are smart, and they hate us deep in their juicy red hearts. They hunt us and kill us, so always beware. All of the ways you might die, I will share. Here are my babies, whose names start with M, and these are the ways that they met their end. Maria Mosquito was snared by a thread. Mandy Mosquito died as she fed. Miranda Mosquito was dumped from a pot. Mackenzie Mosquito just got way too hot. Margaret Mosquito was poured from a vase. Matilda Mosquito squished in an embrace. Millie Mosquito was snagged by a net. Mia Mosquito was gulped by a pet. Megan Mosquito was caught in a trap. Melissa Mosquito was doomed by a slap. Marcia Mosquito was drained from a dish. Michaela Mosquito was swallowed by a fish. Molly Mosquito was cleaned from a bowl. And Myra Mosquito was found by vector control. By now, dear grandmother was looking quite tired. Our heads were now full with the knowledge required. With blood and some luck, we'd be grandmothers, too. So, humans, watch out, we'll be looking for you. And then it gives a little synopsis on what the 80s mosquitoes are, and we call them ankle biters, because they're an aggressive daytime biting mosquito. They are black with white stripes, about the size of a dime, and they prefer to bite humans. Instead of buzzing around one's head, they tend to fly low to the ground, and that's why 80s mosquitoes have earned the nickname ankle biters. Now, they breed in containers and only need small amounts of water to complete their lifecycle. The best way to get rid of 80s mosquitoes is to check weekly for standing water and dump the water out. So a lot of the ways that the mosquitoes were dying were ways that you get rid of mosquitoes, like you tip a vase, you tip a pot, you tip a container, because the mamas lay their eggs dry, and it takes a capful of water and years. They can lay dormant for years. Capful, they're like gremlins. Capful of water, they're alive, and they can live in your house. So, hopefully you all will remember how to get rid of the raggedy mosquitoes. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. I honestly think that's the first time we've ever been read a bedtime story at the council, and thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, did a lot of the things my colleagues did, went to the last four of the Band in the Parks, two at Cottonwood and two at Orville Lewis. They were just a blast, watching people up there dancing and the kids playing around, and it was just all about community at both parks, and Park and Rec just did a great job of just planning that, and everything just went flawless. National Night Out was great, it was our first time that we've done it on our own. We did that over at Little Cottonwood Park. We had our bicycle patrol out there, which I got for a minute to pretend that I was part of the bike control, which was always fun. And then we had the Sheriff's Canine Unit out there, just doing the community effort and just showing what the canine can do, and he was, the sheriff was just great at just demonstrating what the canine is capable of and following orders and everything, which was great. Attended the Los Al Foundation meeting on Monday, last Monday, talked about the casino night in November, which will be a lot of fun, it'll be here in our community center. And next Wednesday, I'll be going to the dedication of the new STEM building over at Los Al High School. This building is phenomenal, and having two sons that are in the science industry that did their lab experiments at Los Al High School in the lecture hall, I'm really excited about the future generations being able to benefit from this state-of-the-art building. And just piggybacking on what Mark said regarding the campaign, although he's deserting us, I am officially running unopposed, and so you'll be stuck with me for another four years, whether you like it or not. So, and that's all I've got, and City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm actually just gonna ask the rec manager, Sosoya, to give us a little update on events that we have coming up here for the rest of the summer.
Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight on behalf of Emlyn. We have a few things coming up in recreation. Next Thursday, August 25th, our Los Alamos Senior Club will hold their first bingo fundraiser since 2019. The buy-in is $20, and it's a $5 additional for each additional game. Doors open at 9:00 a.m., and the buy-in runs from 9:30 to 11:00. Bingo starts promptly at 11:30. So if you're interested in supporting the cause, please come down to the community center. On this Thursday, they'll be, the senior club will be there at 9:00 a.m., and you can purchase tickets for it, or ask for additional information. That leads us into our upcoming Memorial Care Miller Children's and Women's Hospital Long Beach Week of Los Al, presented by Southland Credit Union. This popular event is returning this year for the second annual event. We'll be running it from September 16th through the 24th. It kicks off on Friday, September 16th through Saturday, September 17th, with our very popular Serve Los Al event. We have all of our, we've launched the website, and so if you are interested in volunteering at any of our events, please visit the website, which is servlosal.org. You can sign up to be a volunteer for, to give back to some of our local nonprofits in the area. Saturday, September 17th, is our Orange County Healthcare, I'm sorry, Health Fair, which is by Listonic, it's a free clinic, which will be offering free medical and dental services here at the community center. That's from 9:00 a.m. till noon. And then it's followed by our Bikes and Bytes, which is another popular event. We have four restaurants that have signed up so far, with applications due on the 18th of this month. They're $10 for 10 tickets to the different restaurants, and they will have two to three menu options provided. You can bike or walk to any of the restaurants involved. And then Sunday, the 18th, is again our popular Family Day. It's $20 for a family, it's here at the Los Alamos Community Center, and we'll have five stations that are interactive with crafts and cooking, 10 minutes per station. You can purchase tickets online at Eventbrite. Of course, at the very end of the event is going to be our Race Los Al, which is on September 24th, and then we have our Street Fair, which is the 23rd and the 24th. All the information can be found on our website, and we're excited to bring back this popular event. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
That's it? Okay. Onto Warrens now. Does anybody have any questions with Warrens?
Yes, Mayor, two questions, if we could, sure, I got the right page here. Page six, at the top there, could we just get a little bit more information, like $25,000 for building maintenance, and it appears to be at the community center? Could we give a little more information on what that was for?
Of course, sir. So, we've been actually undergoing a number of small development projects within the city, inside of our actual buildings. We're doing some upgrades within the police department and in City Hall 1, where we've built it out, additional office space. This is for work that is actually done within the community center as well. So, the United Home Remodeling, I know is a kind of deceptive name, but they do do construction on commercial buildings as well, so that's what that is for.
Okay, great, thank you. On page 17, there at the bottom, could we get a little more of an explanation? Both of them are under self-insurance, and it says Public Risk Innovation Solutions. So I was kinda interested on how that money is broken down and for what specific purposes?
Of course, sir. So, you can see the larger of the two expenses there for $31,000 is actually part of our cybersecurity program that we pay into an insurance pool for, and essentially, this is to ensure that we're meeting all the standards that we need to meet to make sure that we're safeguarding all of the information that we're taking in, be it information from our residents with regards to registering for classes, or just transactions that we're doing through the normal course of city business. And then the other amount there that you referred to, the $4,500, that is actually for a Master of Crime program, and essentially, that provides all the checks and balances to ensure that each of us as city employees are, that there's proper checks and balances in place to ensure that we do not go loose with public funds, that there is a very methodical way in which we're spending it, but that we're also recording and that we're also auditing it at the end of the day.
On the cybersecurity portion and the insurance for that, do we have, for any sensitive material, do we have double authentication procedures in place?
We have a number for different, I'll say it this way, sir, for different levels of security, we have different levels of what exactly it takes to access that information, so there are different places where dual-factor authentication will be necessary. There are sectors where that isn't necessary, but we, again, we follow all of the required DO regs, and then also the additional security that's put in place by our banks.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, perfect. Can I get a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Doby?
Aye.
Councilmember Bates?
Aye.
Councilmember Turco?
Aye.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Absent.
Okay, onto the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Does anybody wanna poll anything?
C and E, Madam Mayor.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, do you just have questions on those?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead, start with C, please.
On Item C, you know, I've read some of the background, and I know we have to do this to meet our reporting requirements and that. I think I made this point before, Chief, maybe you could share with the community, I think, like, we ask, I think, all the council members that are here and all of us that say the same thing. We're concerned about our primary targets, and in our mind, obviously, the primary target involves schools. And I'd be curious as to what preparations you've made, and then I'll have one other question, what preparations you've made in case there is some type of a school incident?
Yes, sir. First and foremost, AB 481 is, like you said, a requirement for us to get approval for all of the existing equipment that we already have, which will include all of the equipment that is used in the mutual aid region of West County SWAT. Now, as far as specifically dealing with the threats in our city, the high school and the base would obviously be our largest targets. Now, what we've done in preparation for those is, we currently have an active shooter drill that is in progress of the planning stages with Orange County Fire Authority. Our Support Services Manager is collaborating with them to deliver this drill, which will be in September at McCullough Middle School, in conjunction with the school district. be in September at McCullough Middle School in conjunction with the school district, that will be conducted on a weekend, that's first. Secondly, we've already been in communication with the base about conducting a separate active shooter drill for them specifically. Additionally, we've also outfitted every, as a result of the Uvalde, Texas, school shooting incident, one of the lessons that we learned from that was the ability to breach rooms that were secured. So first step was, Orange County Fire Authority stepped forward and trained everybody in the region, how to pry, because they do this far more than we do, about gaining entry through prying doorways. So they conducted training to teach all the officers in the region how to do that. And then secondly, our Support Services Manager went out and acquired a pry tool known as a halogen and we have now placed one of those in each one of the black and whites for the Police Department to include the supervisor's vehicle, so that any responding unit would possess the ability to force entry into a school if they had to. And the next layer that we have done is implementing the School Resource Officer, which would be the most significant of all of those. We have, we collaborated with the school district to include Dr. Friedman and Principal Kraus to conduct a process within the Police Department to select the officer, so we have done that. He has not been fully released as of yet, we're waiting for two officers to come off for training, but he was there today for the first day of school to be there, introduce himself to the principal, he already got a chance to see his new office and we posted all the pictures on social media of him and the experience. Now, on a larger scale, as it relates to an active shooter response, the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant puts on a three-day active shooter course, as well as a tactical emergency casualty care course, which deals with traumatic injuries that could be sustained and how to treat those in the field for patrol officers. Both of those courses being taught by the Grant and we are in the process of getting every officer on the department trained in both of those. So those are things, the proactive measures that we've taken to try to get all the training we can here in the department.
Chief, well, two questions. First, do we have all the high-powered rifles readily available that we might need if there was a hostage-type situation to be well-equipped to engage that, the hostage taker, if need be?
So, pretty much every, every black and white police car in the county is gonna be equipped with it, with a shotgun and a patrol rifle. So yes, we will be ready should that incident present itself.
My second question relates to what we're doing and how it relates to really trying to trace and get ahead of the situation. What I mean by that is, do we have any intelligence programs, anything that we're working on on a countywide basis that would kind of identify, obviously, you know, we know that most of these people that are going over the top and shooting people are young males. Do we have anything that's tracking social media or that, trying to identify these people ahead of time and getting in front of it, so we're not left in a situation here in Orange County where the guy comes in and shoots it up, then we go back and look at all the social media and the social media, we should have picked it up that this guy was over the top, you know, a year ago, and we weren't doing anything in that regard. So I guess I'm concerned about the mental health aspect of it and what we're trying to do to track, you know, the, the social media and the interaction of these kids to try to identify them early on and stop any, you know, really dangerous illicit behavior that might occur.
Yes, sir. So on the countywide scale, it's gonna be our OCAAC, our Fusion Center, which is Orange County Information Assessment Center. So, our Fusion Center actually has received national recognition as being one of the best Fusion Centers in the country, so that is the first step. And it disseminates information on a countywide scale of events, it tracks every event that is going on in the county, in the region, all of the events nationally that are terrorism-related and it disseminates that information back to all of us within our operational area. Now, on a more local scale, OCAAC itself puts on terrorism liaison training, so that we can train all of our officers to be liaisons for acts of terrorism or things to, that they may see in the field, to create leads that then get sent back to OCAAC that they will then investigate. So it's almost like a two-way communication, we, we train the ground-level officers to send leads to them, that they will then investigate and push back out, information back out to us, but they themselves are also have analysts that are working on the internet constantly tracking these types of acts of terrorism around the country, as well as locally, and they disseminate that information back to us. Now, that obviously will, you know, the most important thing I can tell you is gonna be our School Resource Officer, because if we can get our SRO in the school and establish those relationships, these are the types of relationships that can create leads to prevent this type of thing from happening here.
Great, thank you, Chief.
I had a real quick question on that, is he also gonna be spending time at the two middle schools, because they seem to be getting younger and younger?
So absolutely, he will spend time at all the schools, but he will just have an office with his computer systems all set up, laptop monitor and everything inside of an office at the high school, but he will absolutely spend time at all the schools.
Great, thank you. Is that it for that?
I'll move the recommended action.
Okay, and then item E, we'll do that, and then we can pass the whole consent, yep.
Item E, obviously, trying to effectively utilize staff is important and I think these approaches where it works makes sense. And I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about how we balance it, what can be done by internal staff, what's better in terms of contracting and how, in your mind, that's fitting together based really on E and F that we're looking at tonight?
Of course, sir. And maybe a good place for me to start is basically just to talk about the output that we're seeing from community development and then probably public works in general. I know as the council's aware, we've gone from a, from an operational tempo of $350,000 a year back in 2020, 2021, to last year, spending $3.5 million on CIP projects, to this year, spending just over $4 million. So the amount of output that is being, or projects that are being put out on the street has significantly increased, which I think we're starting to see the benefit of that out in the streets. What comes along with that, though, is obviously staff allocation, where exactly we're putting money in order to accomplish those jobs. And I know the council was very concerned about voting on packages of that size and how exactly we're going to accomplish it. One of the things that we've been able to do, and I'll give Director Noda a lot of credit here, is being able to constantly ebb and flow where exactly we're assigning our particular staff to work on a given day, whereas one day it may be concrete repair and another day it might be park maintenance. By, by adding these contracts or more aptly increasing these contracts, we're able to have staff focus on what I'll call the more specialized work, whereas we can take a contractor and have them do the work that maybe doesn't take as much ingenuity or know-how about what exactly is happening on the street level, such as landscaping or cleaning the median. So, this is a reallocation of time that effectively will make us a little bit more efficient and allow us the manpower to be able to accomplish those projects that the council's approved.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, any other items?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. Onto discussion item, the Economic Development Plan Phase Two.
And I'm gonna turn this over to Director Noda.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and members of council. Yes, I'm here tonight to present the Fiscal Year 2223 Economic Development Program. I don't know if that's a bother, but there's a logging thing on that. Thank you very much. So again, this is the Economic Development Program for Fiscal Year 2223, and so, let's see if we can get this thing going. No. I'm gonna highlight a bunch of programs that we're gonna go and, you know, talk and discuss and welcome council feedback. So, the first thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna continue our business outreach. So if you recall, for this past fiscal year, we went, entered into a huge shop local campaign, so you got to see a lot of marketing material, outreach material out in the community that said shop local, support local, play local, we're gonna continue that approach. And so, we, again, we want to encourage the community to spend locally here in Los Almidos. We want to continue with the new business and resident packets. So last year, we had a big focus on businesses and when a new business re-upped their business license, we gave them a packet that provided information on shopping services, you know, regular services like dry cleaning and of course restaurant options that serve Los Almidos. This year, we're gonna really hammer out the resident packet, so if you're a new renter or you're a new homeowner, we're gonna give you that packet as well. So our economic development supervisor will be working with several of the Realtors locally to get those new residents that come into Los Almidos that information out there to, again, encourage them to spend locally here in Los Almidos. And we've started that, we've kinda taken a little hiatus, but we're gonna go back full bore into the Business Spotlight Series where we provide attention and recognition to select Los Almidos businesses. These little snippets of three or four minutes will introduce the community to these kind of local gems, I don't wanna steal your word, Mayor Pro Tem, but these, these local gems in the community and educate them, again, on the fabulous restaurants or the fabulous service businesses that we have here, again, in Los Almidos.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned reaching out to local Realtors, what about property management companies?
Yes, we have that list as well, correct, correct. Okay. I wanna add there that the estimated annual cost there is $0, because we're gonna all do that in-house and then a lot of, you know, we, we spent a lot of money, it was like one-time fee last year of all the marketing material, we have banners, pull-up banners, et cetera, and so, we're gonna kinda keep that in-house, okay? So, estimated cost is zero. Next is Good Morning Los Almidos, as you recall, we had our first one and was very, very received from the community and a positive experience, so we're gonna bring that back. The second one will be save the date, October 19th, 2022, so I gotta get Jet ready to go on that, because he is, again, gonna be the emcee of our event. Again, this is-
I'm not sure I agree to that, but-
You have no choice.
So again, it's civic engagement between city leaders, residents and business owners, education on services and programs available throughout the city. So I'm hoping here that this time, each of the department heads will kinda give up like a two or three-minute talk with everyone there in attendance on what is new and exciting going on in their department. So again, it's save the date, where it's gonna be held at the community center, more outreach will come as we get closer to that date, but it is scheduled for October 19th, 2022. And again, the estimated cost for that is $5,000, because included in that, it's free for community members to come, but we also will be providing a light breakfast, you know, and so that's what's the cost for that, mostly is the breakfast part. All right, now, the next one here is the big one here that we're very excited about, because we're gonna go into round two of the Los Almidos Bucks Program, right? I think council is very aware that the first round was highly successful, we generated close to $100,000. Now, we're not talking about Los Almidos Bucks money, but we're talking about extra money, plus the Los Almidos Bucks into the local community, because again, if I remember correctly, for every $50 you spend on Los Almidos Bucks, you had to spend a minimum of 75, so you had to bring out $25 of your own money to, again, bring it into the city. So again, round two is scheduled, again, we, the reason why is to stimulate local business and of course, continue the economic recovery. Each resident will receive $50 worth of Los Almidos Bucks. New to round two is the Do Good and Save app, we have partnered with that app to increase our outreach. Another one that's new to round two is Double Your Bucks. So, the team here in Development Services is out there trying to create a list for specific businesses, so if you visit that specific business on that specific day, your Los Almidos Bucks will double. This, again, is to encourage residents of Los Almidos to visit new businesses or restaurants or services that they're not used to. We learned a lot through our first round one, so we're scheduled tentatively to launch Los Almidos Bucks the week of September 19th. The residents will receive it in the mail that week and once you receive it, it will be ready to go. You can basically open up your mail that day and go that night for dinner and it's ready to go. The team is very hard at work right now, going out there, getting the application and signing up residents and all that. Other things we learned is clearly marked envelopes, so we can detail that it's a Los Almidos Bucks and it's not regular junk mail, sending one mail instead of two or three mailers and expanding our outreach, including video. We did do a video last year to educate the residents and the business owners on the process, we're gonna slow it down and kinda go really in detail on how to do it, again, with the purpose of education, so that this time, round two, will be a lot easier for both the resident and the business owner to recoup their money at the end. Okay? Estimated annual cost there is $275,000, $275,000, okay?
We'll have to go dumpster dipping this time.
The next one we're gonna do here is Elevate Los Almidos, right? This business, it's a business development workshop series, we're trying to partner up with a couple, one of the local company or organization here, we're trying to partner with the Los Almidos Chamber. It consists of workshop designed to assist local businesses and independent entrepreneurs in the city. The workshop will provide information and tips on improving their business, like marketing plans, access to resource for growth, utilizing technology for improved growth and outreach. So again, it's a workshop series and then it also includes personal and professional development, so the Development Services Team is partnering with the Recreation Community Services for their Women's Conference. And so, again, it's just to provide information to help personal growth as a business owner and also growth for your business as well. So again, we're developing, we're partnering with both, a couple agencies, but one locally is a Chamber of Commerce here as well. Okay? Estimated cost there is about $1,000. All right, we're excited to announce that we're almost finalizing our contract, so we're gonna bring Los Almidos Night Market to Pine Street every Saturday evening, multiple offerings such as live entertainment, vendors, local artists, family activities, food and drink options will be available. Again, our Parklet Series that we did last spring was very, very successful and, again, you know, I've been here for a while, but there's always a clamoring for the farmer's market, for the artisans' crafts and all that vendors, so we have partnered with a business or an organizer that has, they do the one in Long Beach, they do one in Bellflower, so they're saying that every week, they guarantee a minimum of 20 vendors and food vendors will be out there servicing our community. And so, we're expected to finalize our contract and have this start in October on Pine Street, after all our construction on the streets are done. And again, estimated cost is $4,000, that's basically for the outreach portion, because we're, yes?
Quick question, after the last Parklet Series, was there a survey given to the businesses that are over in that area to see how it affected or impacted or was beneficial to them?
So, we didn't do like an official handout survey, so our Economic Development Supervisor, Alicia Booth, went out there to talk to them and we received very good response, very good response. And so that's why, we'll see you later, but this is a night market, it's just a snippet, but we plan on in spring of '23, bringing back the Parklet Series again, okay?
Ron, you said, the report says that it's going to be throughout the course of the year, so once this starts, it's going to be every Saturday all year long?
That is correct, that is correct.
And, and the $4,000 cost is a one-time cost, or is that?
No, again, that cost is for the outreach, so the marketing, so we wanna outreach heavily, so we plan on doing mailers out to the community, possibly door hangers, banners, so yes, you know, you know, banners you wanna replace maybe every couple of years, so a lot of it will be one-time cost, but again, as we go out throughout the year, it's gonna be some recurring cost, because we wanna continue that outreach as we go from, you know, month to month to month.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. All right, so this is, this slide here is just a snippet, so you can see right here, Business Spotlight was zero estimated cost. Again, I wanna remind that we're funding this through ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act money, it's not coming out of general fund. Good Morning Los Almidos, $5,000, Los Almidos Bucks, round two, is estimated at $275,000. Okay, Elevate Los Almidos, $1,000, Los Almidos Night Market is estimated $4,000 for an estimated total of $285,000. Again, this is just for the first six months and this is the plan that we're gonna do, it might sound ambitious, but, you know, we've done a lot of it already, from now to the December and January. Okay, any questions on, because when, coming spring, we're gonna come back to council, so this is what we have planned for the spring, which is the Parklet Series. I just wanna remind you that the Parklet Series had a very huge bill attached last year, because it was a lot of one-time funding, such as the stage, we purchased a stage, we will not be purchasing another stage, so that, that cost will go down tremendously. The big one here that we're very excited about is the Commercial Residential Beautification Program, we're not quite there yet, we're about 80% there. We're not quite there yet, we're about 80% there, but this is a goal to beautify Los Alamos, both commercially and residential, to increase economic development. You know, just like the fields of dream types, if you build it, they will come. We're kind of taking the aspect of, if you make Los Alamos, you know, modern and energetic and, you know, aesthetically looking nice, then, you know, hopefully it will spur economic development. And then the last one here, Sidewalk Saturdays. During our Parklit Series, we offered a sidewalk Saturday where Los Alamos businesses get to come out to advertise their business or sell their fare free of charge, right? And so we're going to expand that to certain dates in, throughout the year, on certain Saturdays in the month, again, throughout the year, where they can actually come out in front of their business to sell their goods or advertise their good, and they know, we're going to, again, come back to council, see if they can waive that fee and waive that process. Again, making it a lot easier for them to sell and market their business without having go through the process with the city of doing an application and paying a fee and all that. So again, staff will be coming back in a future council meeting to request funding for these programs. But again, I just want, tonight, we're requesting for the first six or seven months, and we're requesting the council to approve the $285,000 to start this, the programs that I mentioned.
Quick comment, back to the residential packets. I don't want to speak on behalf of my colleagues, but I will anyway. Is there any way that you could possibly involve the various council members, so if somebody moves into Carrier Row, that you give me the opportunity to go and drop off the residential packet? That's just the value of living in a small town where you have your local city council representative coming welcoming to the neighborhood. It's not mandatory, but it's something, at least give us the opportunity to be, do. I mean, I don't have a problem on a Sunday afternoon going and visiting the couple of residents that have moved in over the past couple of weeks or so.
Absolutely. I could send out an email, or the city manager sent out an email, we'll give you that option, and we can coordinate accordingly.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments?
Great, great bang for somebody else's buck on the ARPA money.
Absolutely.
So I'll make a motion to authorize use of the funds as proposed.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Onto public hearing, comprehensive update of the city's housing element for the reporting period of 2021 through 2029.
Going to ask Director Noda to give us a short report.
All right. All right. So again, we're here again today to do the comprehensive update of the city housing element for the sixth cycle, which is the reporting period of '21 to '29. So the housing element must be updated every eight years, and is reviewed and certified by the state, which requires that each housing element accommodates and facilitates development of housing to meet the regional housing needs assessment, or RENA numbers. I want to remind council and the public that the city has been allocated 769 housing units to develop, again, during our sixth cycle, which is again, 2021 to 2029. I want to remind you that we are mandated to develop or plan for these units. We're not mandated to build these units, right? Now, if a developer comes in and wants to build housing, of course, we're going to, you know, go down that road. But again, we're not mandated to build houses, we're just mandated to propose these houses. So tonight, council will consider resolution of approval for the draft comprehensive update of the housing element, and if they approved it, then we're going to send it up to HCD for review. I want to just go over a little bit of the timeline, that we've been working on the housing element for a while now, along with our consultant who is here tonight, in case council has any questions. And so recently, we presented the housing element to our planning commission, which was, I think, last month, and they unanimously approved recommendation to council for approval. And again, we're asking for council to take a look at it, and again, tonight is a public hearing, so to open the public hearing testimony, but if everything goes well, to adopt the resolution, so we can send it up to the Housing Department of the state to do their review. I'm here for any questions. Again, our consultant, Nicole Christ, is here as well, and I can get back to the council.
Great. Okay, this being a public hearing, I need to open it up for public comment at this point. And being a very shy audience, I'll go ahead and close it to public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Bates.
And maybe this is a question more for the consultant than specifically for Ron. But as we know, some of these numbers that have come out of RENA just aren't workable. There's no prayer for us to build the number of units on a county or statewide basis that have been laid out as needed in, in RENA, and these housing units probably aren't needed. I'm wondering if there has been any more developments in terms of the counties, and SCAG for that matter, the Southern California Association of Government, who've challenged these state numbers? Can you kind of just update us on what the status is of that situation?
Councilman, my name's Nicole Christ, I'm with Terranova Planning. I don't know the detail of the suits, there are several suits. SCAG, SCAG was assigned a number by HCD and had almost no choice...
Right.
...in how they distributed them. There are also lawsuits against HCD pertaining to the RENA. I am not privy to the, to the legal aspects of this.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bates, maybe if I might just be able to step in, just add a little bit of color to the conversation as well. So I did want to just point out the timeline that Mr. Noda was referring to, was essentially is a 60-day window for HCD to review all of these housing elements. I have my doubts as to whether or not the state can actually accomplish that within 60 days. And so I think you're going to find that any number or certainty that we could provide you is most likely to drift as we get closer to that final day, and I think that you're going to find the same story with the associated lawsuits that go along with it, that I think that as this continues to ramp up, as we head into the fall, I would be shocked if there are not changes that are handed down either by HCD or through SCAG or COG or one of the other regional planning boards. So I, I think your thought process is exactly right, that at some point, someone's going to realize that these numbers for the entire state are a little out of hand.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, you know, just a quick comment. I mean, this is something we've talked about over the years, right, which is Sacramento imposing unfunded mandates on us, you know, just deciding, you know, in their infinite wisdom, that we need to put 760 houses or residences in our city, despite the fact that we're pretty much completely built out. And it's just, it's another unfortunate, you know, overreach by them. So it's something we have to deal with, and we're dealing with it by the adoption of the new housing element, but again, it's disappointing, and we do what we can within, within those mandates, and I want to commend staff for, for going back to the drawing board after, you know, a hiccup earlier this year on this, but good job getting it to the finish line.
And the state's response to those cities that are built out is just eminent domain, some commercial property.
Yeah.
So they really just, it doesn't matter to them what the cities look like, it's, they've got to hit that number.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about this too, right? They're, they're eliminating single-family zoning. You buy a house in a, in a resident, in a neighborhood with a single-family zoning because you wanted, you know, that sort of space, and you paid for it, you know, it's expensive in California, and then they just decide, you know what, we're going to let people put apartments next to you, or we're going to let people put whatever, you know, change the nature completely, right?
Right.
So it's a shifting, everything's shifting, right? And, and it's just, it's unfortunate, but it's the way it is right now.
Okay. With that, can I entertain a motion, please?
Move the recommended action.
Okay. Second. All right. Oh, we don't have to do a roll call, right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. And with that, meeting is adjourned. Three minutes to spare.
Right on time.
Oh, I'm early.